Alright, so we're starting to record. This is our technical second session of Without Rival Bible Study. Let me get some decent lighting and so I can see the ladies. So, do you guys remember your homework last week?
Yeah.
It was to read, but we, this was our homework last week. Brandy, you remember?
Not me.
Okay, so remember we had questions that we went over after our session? And we were to come up with the three things that we are, that's unique about us. Okay? Remember, most of us couldn't come up with anything on the spot because it was like, what in the world? Anybody want to, I won't put anybody on the spot if they don't want to. But does anybody want to volunteer their uniqueness? Amanda?
I would.
You have that look like, I did my homework. What you got?
One is that I'm driven.
Driven.
I'm very driven. And I think that's one of the reasons that God will let me do certain things because I'm 100% whatever it is. It doesn't matter what it is.
Yeah.
I'm always that way. I'm very, very driven.
That's cool. Yeah.
It can harm me too if you're doing the wrong thing.
Right. Well, that goes for almost everything. If it's too much of any, of a good thing, it's a bad thing. So, but that's, that's a good quality to have and it is unique. Not everybody in today's society is driven. At least, I could say.
I love to create.
Very creative.
I always say that I create because I always create, you know?
That's cool.
So, I love to create things.
And you're good at it. Brandy's house and my house is proof. We got all kinds of creations from Amanda in her houses, in the boys' room and everywhere.
And something else that I've got, and it's not practical, but it is, it's fact, I can do anything.
Very talented.
I don't know what it is, but I've always been able to learn really fast. I mean, I've changed parts on vehicles. I mean, the variety is very wide.
Yeah.
It's like I can see something and I can go to my kitchen table. I'll watch a YouTube video of a guy building it, I'll go outside and I'll build it.
Yeah.
I mean, and never even use fireworks.
I know. Your story of how you got started is really miraculous in your business to do it somewhere.
It doesn't matter what it is. I'm a firm believer that God will help you to do whatever you need to do if you truly want to do it. It doesn't matter if you have a house. I've done a lot of things and I can't even remember the tape measure. So, I mean, I can't take one.
Hate how it takes me by a tape measure.
Or six feet or less than that. I have kind of quarters to half and hope nothing.
That's good, it's close enough. You get within a quarter, you're pretty good.
I always say it's the second line out of the half or whatever.
Yeah, that's funny.
But I love that fact that, you know, I just know that I can do anything.
That's really good and it's easy with those three points being your unique side. Do you feel like those are the three places you're probably attacked a good bit at?
Yeah. I saw that like in, in chapter two. Um, let's see, what was that question? It was talking about like having idols. It's very easy when you're good at something and the fact that I'm so driven with my work.
Yeah.
It has, it becomes an idol because I'm so driven to do everything and sometimes that harms me because I always feel like my brother's on my shoulders.
Yeah.
Because when you, you get a plan inside, I'm the person that, I mean, I'm not at nothing until it gets done.
Right.
And forget everything else until it gets done.
Yeah.
And I've had to really learn and allow God to learn, teach me how to balance things.
Yeah.
That's not ever been an easy thing for me is balance because I am so hard for it.
You know what is so crazy? Just because I know a good bit of y'all for the most part personally, I've heard, I know all y'all personally to an extent. It's interesting because I agree with all three of those parts of uniqueness about you. And it's wild to me, I've noticed this in the last two sessions, that how much alightness we have. Because they, I'm sitting here listening to you about these qualities. I'm like, those, I'm very strong in those points. Brittany is very strong in those points. Linda is very strong in those points. Angela is very strong in those points. Joanna, when she's here, Brandy, I mean, like it's, it's kind of wild to me.
We're all going home with you.
Yeah, and that this is, this is who's come to this study. Because I also know, that's why I asked you if you're attacking that, because I also know that we've been either led astray in misuse of that because we're kind of perfectionist. I tell Angela she's obsessive about things sometimes. It gets to an obsessive controlling point. I know that actually personal conversation with Brittany and Linda, we've had those same conversations as well. Like, we get so focused and we have to do it that it becomes a problem. But we are pretty gifted and if we're gonna, you know, if we set our mind to it, we can get it done. A lot of people are not gifted in that and it is a unique quality. But it's odd to me, I mean, it's, it's wild to me, I guess I should say, that where we're strongest is where we're attacked. You know, and we, yeah, it's overwhelming and then it shuts us down and it isolates us and pulls, you know, pulls. It's just so wild that your three unique points are very.
There's times where I have to actually pull you away from those things to reevaluate and redirect you. Because I have felt that in the last month. I mean, that's what he's done with me.
Yeah.
I mean, very clearly, it was time's up, work.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm sorry. And you said something earlier about being. Yeah, I was just always too focused on the goal instead of the goal, the main goal.
Yeah.
If I'm gonna have work, but that shouldn't be my focus every day.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody else got any unique points that they, or unique qualities that they want to?
Mine are so, so similar.
I know, but she was saying it, I was like, whoa.
I feel like I'm very creative in a sense that it happened to be creative in several different areas. I'm like huge. I went and watched the women do the pastures and I did everybody's pastures in our house and I can do a lot of the stuff on the panels and everything. I've, for a long time, even though I'm, I put various things in my post hair.
See?
And I just watched the people, I was not doing it for so long. But what I don't realize and what didn't happen is you get so good at everything, you start taking it on yourself and then it becomes a burden. Now, everybody in my home's like, we haven't done our hair. I need my hair cut out. And I'm like, you know what?
Hair's $10.
Yeah.
Go get a haircut.
And I've had to get two of them and I thought, I'm cool.
It's like.
I didn't know why, I was thinking, I'm kidding.
Or you can do it, so why not? So, are you, you know, we're caring and compassionate and loving, so we're all, every one of us are caregivers right now.
But that's what it is. Oh, you're saving your money and you're doing it. It's like, I bless you, but really, it's in my house again. I'm almost dying here. I don't feel good.
And who's asking you? Your children, your husband, your family, people that you have already had a problem saying that to? That you already have a problem going, mama needs me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you do stuff like that so much that you're actually good at it, it becomes a problem. Always. If God learned it, it would have been a problem to begin with.
Yeah.
That's why I did not go into a business off the free item side.
Oh, and she almost did and would have done awesome.
I almost did and I was like, no, I do this for the love of God. I do that because I need this by some time. Because I struggle with that. Because I'm like.
I don't like to do orders. I like to do what I want to do, when I want to do it.
That's what I like.
That's what I do.
Yeah.
And you know, um.
What else you come up with?
Because, you know, I am, I'm looking at something. I have changed my, all my prayers. There is not anything that, my daddy raised me, it's like, tell me, there's nothing you can't do.
Amen. That's real women's land right there.
But, well, I'm an only child, so you got my place with mommy. So, you gotta know mommy.
You were the son and the daughter.
I have my children, it's like I'm out of asphalt because that is my. It hurts to ask for it.
Mm-hmm. It is hard to accept, yeah, except it's just as hard as asking for it. Once you've asked for it, then.
I'm so used to doing it and then I get, and then.
Yeah.
I agree with you because I don't ask, I don't get mad at you. But that's going down hard is I have no choice now. Not that God's caused it, but I do believe that we can have it a whole different.
It makes you, because I mean, I'm not, anybody knows, you know, I'm not a slow person, slow driving.
I'm always going to drive.
I can't watch a full movie. I mean, literally, it's that bad. I would crochet while watching your maids' bows or try to make a sign or something while I sat down. It was ridiculous. And I think sometimes if God literally has to pull us away from everything to slow us down and realize what we're actually doing and what we're allowing to happen, that he intended it for joy and we would just suck a lot of it.
Yeah, well, we take it on ourselves.
Yeah. I mean, my school was the one thing I still commit because I had to hear all the downline.
Hold your off from school. Anybody got any other unique points? Angela?
I might wrote the same thing you said about being creative. Doing writing and drawing.
You are excellent with writing.
I love writing both.
Your writing is just honestly, it's a, it's like a whole different person. When you read her writing, you have no clue that Angela wrote it. I mean, it's just like, it's almost like this level of intelligence and just words and it's beautiful. I mean, it is really insane, the gifting and writing and creativity that she has. I take all the time to write a book. That, that's your money right there, girl. That's your job. Write a book. She's good at it. Create, very creative.
I would love to write like a poetry book or.
Yeah, you could do it.
Write a novel and do a book.
And grammatical, like corrective, correct, you know, like, I'm like, dude, she's actually.
A little good.
She's good with her grammar and punctuation and everything. That's just on text messages. But I have read some other stuff she's written. Um, anybody else?
Um.
You got something, Brandy?
Yes. I like to make people happy and see people smile. So, I'm gonna say I'm a little humorous.
I would say you're a lot humorous. And not in the sense that you're funny looking. You are funny and then you do, you care about people and you want them to be happy and, and light-hearted and feel good.
Yeah.
I think in essence, you're a real caregiver.
Yeah.
In your, you just want people to be happy and loving.
All the time.
And you got that laugh that makes everybody laugh. It was funny because her kids, she is contagious and her kids have that laugh. Mason has that laugh and I'm like, you laugh just like your mama. Anything else? You got any other unique qualities? We're supposed to go up with three.
I know, I've come up with that one, so.
That's a good one and it, it's very fitting and it's very, very true.
Yeah.
Brittany, you got anything you want to throw in there? I know you kind of. Yeah, you, you're a caregiver to the max. Yeah. She.
Like I'm really supportive of my friends and stuff.
Being that confident type person. Yeah, that's, it's a great quality.
They can come to people and invite a day or two of meeting me.
And talk to them, safe. That's a good unique quality to be a safe place for people to land.
I always know for all the people, please, but go ahead and.
Yeah, yeah. I can actually see that with all of us too. Yeah, actually in every one of y'all, I've seen that very thing.
Especially you.
Trust us.
Seems like every time I get around you, that and you just feel.
Yes, like she's pulling out of the.
I'm just looking at you. Y'all, when I, this is, and to me, that's, that is probably a unique quality that God had gifted me with. Because I remember, this is no joke, being in sixth and seventh grade. And I asked, would ask for silent lunch because silent lunch was at the teacher's table. And I sat at the teacher's table and they talked to me about like who they were dating, about marriage. Olivia has the same thing. I see adults, I have to watch it, you know, because I'm like, sometimes I'll be a helicopter mom and be like, you ain't talking to my kid about your marriage. Back up, she 12, 13. But she has that quality in her that people are just drawn to talk to her. But I think part of it is because she and I both want to help. We just want to help in any way we can. And so, you know, and maybe the trust, I really don't like the whole gossip ring thing, like that, oh, let me pray for you. Like Pastor Ed has talked today about, let me tell you this prayer request, um, so-and-so, but I need you to pray for him, but this is what's really going on. I don't want that crap. I do not like that. I don't play that game. So, um, it actually probably weirdly enough, Pastor John brought it to my attention this year. He's like, you know, me and Selena don't have a lot of people we can confide in and still trust that they're gonna come to church on Sunday and still be our friend between the pastor role to the person role is kind of hard. And he was like, you know, you've proven over time to not tell our deepest, darkest, more human secrets. And so, I, I mean, that's a quality that I think is, is unique and something that, you know, I like to hold on to and I'm proud of. Yeah, I, I like being a helper like that.
Because I'm not one, I mean, really at all, just don't wanna go to anybody. And I, ever since I've met you, it's like, you just look at me and I'm like, I'm here and I saw you.
Man, Brandy had dinner one time and it was like, you thought we'd been friends for like 10 years. We was just like, I'm going, I'm talking about this. No, it was fine, it was fine. But we, you know, and we won't go, because we could talk about this for a while and I do want us to get to the video. But, um, the main thing is about this question is to look at the positive about you. Because we are so quick to critique and look at the negative. We, we obviously, it is sad.
Because I mean, I literally come up with different things that I'm not good at.
That's right. In 30 seconds.
It took me so, it took me so thinking.
Yeah.
I mean, literally thinking to come up with three.
And it's, should I share this?
Does that make me prideful or?
Yeah.
And I mean, that's exactly what I started thinking.
Yeah.
That made me feel like I'm too proud of lying.
And that's like a pseudo humility that the enemy is trying to steal your joy. Well, are you being prideful that you sit in a class of women and, you know, that you tell these qualities about yourself? I feel like we all kind of struggle just to share those things because it's like, we don't want to come across as arrogant. We don't want to come across as I'm better than you or, you know, all that kind of stuff. But what it is, is when you hear Lisa Bavir talk, she's not cocky. She's confident because she knows who she is, but who she is isn't contingent on someone else. It's without, she walks without rival and not in condemnation or conviction of other people. She walks in, in that confidence of who she is. And I hope that we're able to find that in this.
It's like the enemy makes us face it or not want to talk about these things. But I've just seen it as the fact that when we don't talk about it, we don't praise God for the.
That's right.
We're rather God of his.
That's right.
By not saying who he's created us to be and, you know, elaborating on those good things instead of those negative things.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's like Pastor John who talked about back when they would do testimony services or testimony time. And he's so right about this. They stand up, let's take Little Orgrimoff for example. And I want to give a testimony and praise God about this week, my, my daughter come in drunk and her boyfriend's unbeater and I got flu and then I got pneumonia and all this stuff, but praise God, I'm in church Sunday. And it was like, was that a testimony or was that praising the enemy for everything he did this week? Like it was like a one minute, one second blur of, oh yeah, praise Lord, hallelujah, I'm not dead. And then, but it was 10 minutes of the hail that they had been through that week. And you know, I started checking, when he started sharing this, he was like, I quit doing testimony services because what was it giving glorification to really? And I started thinking like my own personal testimony. And I, I got to looking at the value, the time, say I had a 30-minute session with the teens and I gave my testimony. How much was describing how bad I was? Now, there is context leading up, like, you know, you want to tell them a certain amount so they can understand the restorative grace and restoration that God's done. But there should always be a bigger God in your testimony than the sin in your test, you know? And I had to regroup on that. It made me second guess because my sin in my eyes was so big, but really, when you're sharing something like, it really should be about the praise of God. That we're here is so much greater. And that's the same concept in looking at ourselves. Our praise is not even about us. Those qualities that we've listed, if you think back, you've been that way your whole life. You've been a caregiver since you were small or you cared about people or you've been very creative and unique and you've been hardworking and a go-getter. I mean, really, probably since as long as you can remember as some aspect. Like, I mean, I literally remember being in elementary school and teachers talking to me like I was an adult. And I didn't as a child say, hey, wait, I'm a kid, you're an adult, you know? But looking back, I'm like, hey, I was a kid, you're an adult, you're kind of jacked up. But it was something in me that just drew that out of them. And that's not by my own power. I couldn't have cultivated that in seventh grade. That is way beyond me. But it is some kind of characteristic that God placed in who I am. And I have to give him credit for that. I need to give him the glory. One of the things that I think is a unique characteristic about me that I do struggle to even say is I do think I'm bold.
You are.
It can be a bad thing. But just like all of these qualities can be bad, but I, I do have a, just a certain gumption that overrides, you know, maybe my fear of, maybe you should shut up and sit down. But you know, when it's there, it's there. And now that I'm with the Lord and it's sandpapered and cultivated a little bit and tweaked by the Holy Spirit and filtered and, you know, made a little bit nicer and prettier and softer, but he's able to use it. And I'm like, where did that come from? You know, like I'm sick to my stomach going to the high school on Thursdays when I speak to the teenagers, when it's my turn to talk. I'm like, huh, I'm a youth pastor. I speak to teenagers all the time. But when, but when I like finally stand up there to speak, it's like this just boldness comes, it's not mine. But people might say, Rachel, you're really bold. I'm like, you know, I shouldn't, I talked about this in my sermon this morning about it's hard to take compliments. But those compliments are actually compliments to the Lord who created you. You know, I mean, thank you so much, I'm bold, the grace of God, you know, he gave this to me because it ain't my mom. You know, my brain is fearful and my mind goes to you are inadequate and you are wrong and you are, you suck. That's where my brain goes. But it's the Holy Spirit that says, I didn't create you, weak and powerless. You know, that was my whole message this morning. It was crazy.
It just goes right back to how we started, you know, and we use the goodness that God created us to be in our assets. He uses those things, those same things against us.
Yeah, he does, he does. And so, when we find who we are in him, by finding him first, then finding who we are in him. So crazy because this is like my message this morning, that's kind of funny, which I did bring up this book a couple times. But when we, we start to line up with truth, he can't attack us in that anymore because we know this is what God created us to be. He has made us powerful. He has made us equipped. He has anointed us. He has appointed us. It's not by our own mind and our own strength. And then when we take that out of it, then we can start prioritizing that we struggle so hard to do. We're all overloaded. We're all overwhelmed because we take it on ourselves or we don't know when to say no. I mean, we're going through that, you know? Yeah, we're going through that thing right now. A lot of us are going through the, we have to say no to some things. But when we put it back in perspective, it's all about his glory and he started shifting things and using all these qualities. It's really awesome. So, let's go ahead and get on our, um, thing. So, okay, Brandy, you should be able to watch our video with us.
Okay.
Okay, can you see the screen now?
I can.
Okay, alright, good. So, give me just a second. Well, let's see if it goes to session two because I don't. Let's see, yeah, there it is.
The next session we're gonna be talking about is don't settle for crumbs and rumors. Too many people settle for something less than what God has for them. You know, when Austin was a little boy, we got him this, um, this like rocking bouncing horse that was on springs. And it was his favorite thing to strip down to his underwear and ride that bouncing horse to when finally we had good Christian music. Does anybody remember? You guys probably, we used to have bad Christian music. You had to pretend like you liked it, but it was bad. And integrity, Hosanna had just come out with, you know, some cassette tapes and we were playing Rejoice Africa. And my boys were like so excited to not just have white men singing to them, but to have a black brother singing to them. And there was this Rejoice Africa song and Austin would write to this song. And whenever the praise and worship leader would say, talking about God, he'd say, there's nobody like him. He'd say, nobody like him. And my son would be like, nobody like him, nobody like him. And he'd be bouncing on the horse and I thought, wow, how interesting. And he like pulled out that face and he would just have this wallet bouncing and just totally excited. So, one day he came down, he goes, Mom, why nobody like God? Why nobody like him? And I said, no, 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 no. He's not saying that nobody likes God. He is saying that there is nobody like God. And I said, it's not like God is lonely and he doesn't have anybody to sit with, you know, we're all doing little signs like you can sit with me. That is not God's issue that he's looking for somebody to sit with him because he's lonely. He didn't create us because he is lonely. He is God alone. And repeatedly in scriptures, predominantly in the book of Isaiah, God asks, who is like me? Who is like me? There is nobody like the Most High. And we might be tempted to think it's just kind of like, let's just ponder that thought. But the truth is, when you actually stop treating that statement like a rhetorical question and acknowledge it as truth and say, there is nobody like you. When God comes to you and says, who is like me? Say, nobody, nobody, my husband isn't like you, my children aren't like you, my friends aren't like you, my, there's nobody like you, God. You alone are the giver of life. You alone are the Lord Most High. We have a culture right now that is kind of dumbing down God's image, reducing him to kind of our BFF that might follow us on Twitter. But the truth is that God alone, God alone is to be worshipped and to be praised. And when I was preparing for this, I began to think about why it's really important that God has no rival. See, everything that happened with the fall didn't begin in the Garden of Eden. It actually began when Lucifer, who was the star of the morning, who was the covering archangel over worship, began to imagine that he was like God. He began to see that God was receiving all this worship and because he was, the Bible says, perfect and beautiful and full of wisdom, he thought, I think I'm like God. I think I'm like God. And the book of Ezekiel and the book of Isaiah talks about how iniquity rose up in his heart and he was cast out. But you know, this wasn't just a random thing. One-third of the angels went with him. So, we can't think that this is just something that was an isolated insulate because we have a world right now where people think they're actually like God. And I'm not talking about a reflection of his attributes. I'm talking about a people who think they have the right to rival him. God will not share his glory and God will not share his position with anyone else. Even though our God is invisible, his existence is undeniable. The book of Romans tells us in chapter one, verse 19, but the basic reality of God is plain enough. Open your eyes and there it is, by taking a long and thoughtful look at what God has created. People have always been able to see what their eyes as such can't see. Eternal power, for instance, and the mystery of his divine being so that nobody has a good excuse. You know, we walked in today, we saw those mountains and I don't know if you saw them early this morning. I was up super early, I was up at dark 30 and I got to see those mountains and their pink and purple majesty. And I tried to take a picture through my shower window of, of those mountains. But the truth is, it was a very limited reflection and no matter how many filters I tried to put it through on Instagram, it didn't capture the essence of what I felt when I saw that sun coming over the mountains. The existence of our God is undeniable. And everybody's like, well, how do you know there's a God? Look at everything that is seen and it declares what is unseen. His reality is one thing, his definition is another. Our God supersedes earthly definitions. Our God actually is the undefinable one because how can we define the one when we are limited by an earthbound language? Do you understand that we don't actually have words that were created in our temple realm that can actually describe God who lives in the eternal realm? Our language is limited by our experience and if we have never experienced anybody like God, then we have no words to reference God. So, we can't even describe him. He is the God that is indescribable by anything that we would know as language. It says in First Timothy that our God dwells in unapproachable light. This is what it says. It says he'll show up right on time, his arrival guaranteed by the blessed and undisputed ruler, the high king, high God. He is the only one death can't touch his light so bright that no one can get close. He's never been seen by human eyes. Human eyes can't take him in. Honor to him, an eternal rule. If our eyes can't even process him. If our eyes can't even process him, then we couldn't draw more than a stick figure of an outline of him. I asked some women, I said, what, what is it that shuts down your ability to identify with God? What is it that keeps you out of his presence? First woman said distractions. I think we all live in a culture right now that is trying to distract us. Always drawing us into the presence of something else instead of the presence of God. We have social media. We have Netflix. We have phones. We have everything interrupting us. And the truth is, God won't interrupt your interruptions. God will just wait. And it is easier to go into the presence of things than it is to go into the presence of God. It is easier to go into the presence of people than it is go the presence of God. But if you learn how to draw near, then he will manifest himself. But you do come in calling him who he is, holy, calling him who he is, your utmost desires. Number two, busyness to me is into this whole realm of distractions. And the truth is, you know, sometimes I think that people are like, okay, we're going to stop being busy. We're just going to stop everything. No, we actually need to be, have, well, have full lives, not just busy lives. We need to be effective. It's okay to be busy if you're not just busy for busyness sakes, but you have a full, effective life. You will be miserable if you do not have a full life. Number three, guilt and shame. We think God is in there just getting ready to yell at us. Well, the truth is, he's not. He's not looking for a reason to condemn us. He's looking for a reason to connect us to our future and to say, this and this is taken care of. Number four, legalism. Legalism. Legalism is an interesting dynamic. One of the women said, it's the beginning of the new year and this forest reading plan. Every single year I fail it. I've already missed a day. It's only like January 10th and I'm already in trouble. So you know, the thing is, anytime you begin to hear the words, I have to, I have to read my Bible, I have to pray. I, it, it, you already have the wrong motive. I, if my husband said, I have to spend time with my wife, I'd be like, you know, you can just skip that, buddy. So it isn't about a have to. It's about a want to. You know, I know for myself, you know, again, growing up in the eighties was just a really awkward, legalistic time. And you know, there was this whole teaching about can you not pray an hour? And you know, and I couldn't, I couldn't. I falls, I had a brand new baby. If I was, you know, if I was in the closet in the dark, so I wouldn't be distracted. I'd fall asleep on the shoes. If I had the light on, I'd begin organizing my closet. And I totally forgot that I was supposed to be praying. And so I couldn't do it. And God finally was like, stop this. I want you to want to come to be with me. This isn't about me. This isn't like, oh, I can't do anything in heaven unless Lisa prays. I've been completely disempowered. He's like, I need Lisa to pray so I can actually flow through her life. And too many of us are living on crust and crumbs. And if we get a revelation, like Job had a revelation of the wonder of God, then we will want to go into him. And Job forty-two verses five through six, I love how the message unpacks it. Job has had God show up after all the counselors, which I one time thought were sounding really good. Uh, after all the counselors, God shows up in a whirlwind of wonder. So he doesn't see God. He just sees the, what's around God. He just sees the cloud. He just sees the unapproachable light. And he says, I admit I once lived by rumors of you. Now I have it all firsthand. From my own eyes and ears, I'm sorry, forgive me. I'll never again live on crust of hearsay and crumbs of rumors. You know, I love that we have so much available to us right now. I love that you can watch podcasts and you can go listen to sermons online, but the truth is, those are crumbs. They're good crumbs, but they're like Hansel and Gretel's crumbs, that you're supposed to follow the path of those things. So that it brings you into God's presence. Nobody has a podcast so that you just come into their presence. They have a podcast because they want to lure you into God's presence. But you won't go into God's presence if you actually don't know who he is. And because we have this unapproachable light and this language barrier, God says, I'm going to send my son Jesus so that they can understand how they can approach me and what I would do and how I would interact with them. But even in Jesus' day, he had to like deal with some of this with his disciples. And Matthew sixteen, starting with verse fifteen, Jesus is holding his disciples. They're walking around and Caesarea Philippi, and he asks his disciples, what are the people saying about the son of man? And they replied, some think he is John the Baptist. Some say Elijah. Some say Jeremiah or one of the other prophets. And you know, people will tell you who they think God is. But Jesus pressed his disciples. And when you get into the presence of God, he'll press you. And he'll ask you the same question that Jesus asked his disciples here. He said, and how about you? Who do you say I am? Simon Peter said, you are the Christ, the Messiah, the son of the living God. Jesus came back and said, God bless you, Simon, son of Jonah. You didn't get that answer out of books or from teachers. You didn't get it from rumors and you didn't get it from crust and crumbs. He said, my father in heaven, God himself, let me in on this secret of who I really am. And now I'm going to tell you who you really are. See, when you have a revelation of who God really is, then he is positioned for the first time to tell you who you really are. He said, you are Peter, a rock. It wasn't just like, hey, I like the name Peter better, so I'll call you Simon. If I had some bad experience with Simons, you're going to be a Peter. No, he was saying, you're solid. Peter, you're not going to be up and down all the time. You're stable. You're a rock. I know what your past has looked like, but that's not who you really are. Because a lot of us are not who we really were in our past. And God wants you to get into his presence so he can actually begin to unpack who you really are. And he says, this is the rock on which I will put together my church. What is this rock? Personal revelation of God's presence in our lives, beginning to talk to us and tell us who we are. He said, this is the rock on which I will put together my church, a church so expansive with energy that not even the gates of hell will be able to keep it out. And then he goes on to say, and that's not all. You will have complete and free access to God's kingdom. Keys to open any and every door. No more barriers between heaven and earth, earth and heaven. A yes on earth is a yes in heaven. And a no on earth is a no in heaven. I told you in last session, you're really a child of God. But then even in that child thing, there is a unique representation of who you are. I actually had God tell me who I was one time. It was a really interesting dynamic. I was arguing with an editor on the phone about wording on a book. And you know, when God gives you something with specific wording, you don't want to have it edited differently. And so I was like, but that is not how he gave it to me. And so when I hung up the phone, my husband was like, whoa, 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 you were really adamant about that. And I said, I am adamant. I am adamant about that because you know what? I, I'm going to answer to God. And so that day, the most unusual gift came home to me. This little treasure box came in home. And sometimes I get random gifts. I was like, okay. And when I opened it up, it had this big stone that fell down that looked like a, a diamond. And then it has a scroll and I opened up the scroll and it said, you are my adamant. And it said, the stronger the enemy gets, the stronger you'll get. And I didn't know this, but an adamant is a diamond. And God has something that he wants to speak over your life that'll be an image like he gave me to knock back down. That no matter how hard the enemy came against me to continue to be adamant. See, our identity is intimately related to our revelation of who Jesus is. So I'm going to ask you, who do you call him? Who do you call him? You call him Savior? Yeah, he'll save you. You call him good teacher? He'll instruct you. You call him wise counselor? He'll give you wisdom. Do you know Islam calls him a prophet and healer and a worker of miracles? Do you know that history says that Buddha actually prophesied that Jesus would come? But that doesn't mean they hold him in the place that you need to hold him into. Those revelations are crusts and crumbs. Because when we call Jesus, the Christ, the Messiah, the Lord, the son of the Most High Living God, we experience a revelation of all he is, not just a few things. First John four, fifteen through seventeen says, whoever confesses that Jesus is a son of God, God abides in him and he in God. That is why we have unlimited access because we live in him and he lives in us. So we have come to know and believe that love that God has for us. God is love and whoever abides in love, abides in God and God abides in him. By this is love perfected with us so that we may have confidence for the day of judgment. Because as he is, so are we in this world. Our connection is made through our confession. There is something that is bridged in the gap when we deny ourselves and choose to be found in him. He reveals himself. As I press in to God, he reveals me. So I'm going to close out with declaring certain things about him. Because of who he is, you are who he says you are. Because he is love, you are loved and you can be loving. Because he is life, you are alive. Because he is able, you are capable. Because he is my brother, I am God's daughter. Because he is almighty, you are mighty. Because he is a healer, you are healed. Because he is wisdom, you can be wise. Because he is, you are fearfully and wonderfully made. Let's invite the word of God to gain full expression in our lives. Heavenly Father, because of who you are, I am who you say I am. Show me who I really am. Father, as I am in your presence. And I ask that you would create moments for each and every one of these daughters. That your presence would astound them with your wonder. And then in your presence, they would accept everything that you say about them as a gift. Father, that they would find out what you have made them to be capable of. That you would whisper a secret name to them that would ignite something in their spirit with a picture. That they would know beyond a shadow of a doubt that you are a God without rival. In Jesus' name, amen and amen. Listen, there is absolutely no reason why you should settle for crusts and crumbs or rumors and whispers. God has something he wants to specifically speak to you. I know that you want to know him. I know that you want to hear from him. So I am challenging you to press into those areas that are shut down and begin to receive everything that the I am says about you. Calls that there. Alright, so here's our questions. I was trying to write down the, what was the quote? Did y'all get that with your connection? Uh-oh, is that loud? Oh, better. Um, your connection is, I'll have to go back and read that. Is directly related to something. Anyways, I was trying to get that quote down fast enough, but I didn't. I thought it was really good. Alright, so what in an area in your relationship with God? What is an area in your relationship with God that feels more like crumbs and leftovers than a banquet? Now, these questions are in your book on page two forty-six. So is there any area of your relationship with God that feels more like crumbs and leftovers than an actual feastful banquet? I know that's kind of a, to me, this got a little bit deeper than the last one, which is good. And it's provoking us to look at things. Um, I can tell you that I, from being in a place of what I felt like was a banquet to being in a place that now feels like I'm living off of crumbs. I feel like probably my area in relationship is just connection. I feel like I went from this all you can eat buffet of connection with the Lord to leftovers of that all you could eat buffet I had a few years ago. And I think why I'm there is because the busyness, the distractions, but also even the complacency of not nurturing and accepting the feast. Does that make sense? Like if you sat home, or if you sat down every single meal to an all you can eat buffet, at some point you would start to expect that at the next meal, it's going to be all you can eat buffet. And so maybe you don't help prepare or maybe you don't come with the same expectancy or appreciation or whatever, and you start to take it for granted. I, I feel like, I'm just being honest and real where I'm at right now. I feel like I did that, I have done that. And I'm in a place of getting back to the banquet. He never took it from me. I removed myself. I kept backing up from the table till I'm at the point of crumbs on the floor over here, you know? But he never moved. I moved. So I think in my life, the area of relationship with God that feels more like crumbs and leftovers is the actual area of relationship, the connection, you know? Um, when she put it in the turns, which it was interesting that the message used that, that it was crumbs and rumors. And then she talked about it being like, you know, I love podcasts. I love sermons. I eat people's stuff up all the time. I love Lisa Bear and all this stuff, but she's so true. And what she says, that's like crumbs, it's someone else's revelation. And until it becomes your revelation, it is something to spark you. It's something to give you an appetite to go after the banquet. But how many times do we settle with just that being enough? The Sunday morning messages are just enough. On Wednesday nights and the Bible studies, even this right here, it is a crumb to ignite our hunger. It is not the banquet and the feast. Because that's only filmed in intimate relationship with him. He wants to have that banquet and that feast just with you. But we have to attend and we're not. We're busy. We're distracted. You know, and, and honestly, I think a lot of our distractions and busyness are worldly legitimate. I don't think we're just, God, I don't have time for you right now. Or like maybe when we were younger, I'll get saved when I get done being drunk, you know? Or, you know, I will not ever drink again if you'll save me off this toilet and get drunk or not. I don't think we're in that lifetime right now, you know? We're not in that space. Been there, done that, got past it. I think we're at a little more dangerous because now we're good Christian people. And we are eating crumbs constantly. But are we taking that time to totally just say, okay, I want to hear from you. I want you. I want fresh. I want new. I want, you know, bread made today, not the crumbs of somebody else's. Oh, yeah. We do do just enough to get back. And you know. Yeah, I don't have time to read that right now. But and you know, it's not condemning, you're not going to hell because you check Facebook before you check your Bible app. But it gives you a perspective of your priority. Because I do. Because that's what you do. Yeah. Yeah.
And then the distractions and everything on my own. I'm, I'm totally, I don't know if it's a connection that mine is. I don't know how to kind of describe it. And that I, everything that is going on is legitimate. But I'm so distracted by, that I'm not going where I really need to be, which is him.
Yeah.
I mean, he's answered everything going on there right now, but I'm so distracted by my own situation and I can't.
Yeah.
See, and yeah, I'm like, when you're talking to someone about distraction, I'm like.
Well, I think we're attacked in that. I mean, honestly, in general, as Christians, as women, as mothers, as humans, as, you know, people, we are distracted. That's where he gets us. That's where he pulls our gaze away. Because what is the Bible talking about all the time? He wants us to look at him. He wants us to seek him. He wants us to find him. And he's going to show up in a huge way. He's there. Well, he just needs us to fix our eyes on him. And he's going to show up in a huge way. He's there. He just needs us to fix our eyes on him. And then everything falls into proper perspective. But it's the simplest thing in concept, but is the hardest thing in practicality. Because my kids are seriously pooping and puking everywhere. And I really seriously have been up for two days legitimately awake. I'm seriously on medication that makes me crazy, but I feel crazy. And so I'm like, God, I don't have time. So then I do some prayer time and there's, you need prayer time, prayer is very important. But you need the word as much as you need prayer time. We overlook that because sometimes prayer is easier than reading the word. It is in my life, because I can pray while I'm breastfeeding and I can pray while I'm driving down the road and all this stuff, but I can't really pull up my Bible sometimes or pull up my Bible app. That's why it's so important in the morning time to make intentional purpose decision to read, to seek him out. Lord, I'm going to devote this to you, even if it's twenty minutes, if that's what you got, if it's thirty minutes, if that's what you got. And I, I mean, I struggle with the whole, well, you could get up early and you could read your Bible. No, I can't because I nurse every three hours all through the night and I'm awake on all. And then I sleep in the morning. I'm a night person. So I'm like, no, I really can't. I can't get up early. So what I've had to do is shift my schedule later. So I'm like, okay, if I'm not going to get up early, because I'm not going to lie to myself and say this is my New Year's resolution, I'm going to get up thirty minutes early. No, you're not. It's a lie. You're not going to do it. I'm going to be real with myself. So what I've done is, okay, well, I'm going to devote this and I'm going to ask you to meet me in my schedule and help me take a shorter shower or something in my day that you're going to have to help me remove about thirty minutes of my time to make it work. And I'm telling you, when we meeting that way, I'm saying, God, I want to give you this and I really want to devote this to you and I want to be faithful in it and I want to see you in it. He has always made the way. It's just like when we ask him, not the word says about temptation. He's always made it out for us, but we have to seek him for it. If we'll do it, it'll change everything. Now, I want to go to question two. Why, who does God whisper that you truly are? Now, this might, this and, and the second, the number three, might be something that kind of becomes our homework a little bit. But have any of you had an encounter or have a moment where he in essence changed your name? Or, I have two. What, what you got? Amanda, you want to share it? Brandy, can you hear her well? Hold it a second, you're muted, let me. Can you hear her? Brandy, I muted you.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was getting on the record and well, when Linda and Amanda and everybody talks, you can hear. Okay, I'm going to mute you back. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, I just want to make sure it's recorded.
It was actually last year, um, God would set a time for me to be, and it's funny because it was the same time last year. Not a half time for three months. And I spent that entire three months literally every day just feasting. I mean, so much so that my pastor had to remind me that I still needed to do laundry and I still needed to cook because I was in that place.
Yeah, that's so awesome.
I remember I was, I was by my bed and I was praying and I had put that song on, um, I want to lay at your feet, sit at your feet. And I was singing that song and I was praying and I heard him tell me that your new name is Anna-Nia. And I'm like, what in the world? And I mean, I just kept praying and, um, I spent a little more time praying and then I just kept hearing it over and over and over. And I started looking it up and trying to figure out, you know, what the song was and what it meant. And when I seen it, it was just like, I mean, I broke in tears because it actually means worshiper of God only.
Oh wow.
And I thought that is just so amazing that he would sing you like that.
Yeah.
It was awful.
That, now, when you go through times now of maybe getting more towards a crumb moment or something, do you find that you call on that and there's peace in your heart that he called you that at some time? Because I had a moment like that, not, not quite just like that, but I was going through some change and he really started talking to me about what I called myself. Because I will call myself ugly things before anybody else can. And I, he really started talking to me, I believe he was about five. And she had said, she'd walked in the bedroom, no, she was like seven. Six, me and Heath had just got back together. And she looked in my mirror and she said, I'm fat. And that's an F-word in my house unless I say it. And Heath was like, do you hear what's coming out of her mouth? That is you. That is not her. You know, we don't condone that kind of stuff. We don't let her talk about herself like that. We would never talk about her like that. He, she has a hundred percent heard you say that. I'm like, I don't say that about myself in front of her. He's like, yes, you do. You don't even realize it and you say it all the time. And so I was, you know, mad that he said that and then he blamed me and whatever. And but at the place, I was at a time of really seeking God on a very deep level. And so I'm, I was in tune with the spirit enough to say, okay, Lord, what is truth in that? Is that my word? Did I put that in? And then of course, it was, that was the truth. And he, but what he did instead of beating me for saying, you know, putting this in my daughter, what he did was show me that it was in me and I was projecting it into her. And he also started showing me all these other things that I thought about myself. You know, inadequacies and insecurities and just junk that in essence may have been true, but it wasn't who I was. But I had taken it on as my identity. And I mean, even my sin had become part of my identity. That I was an adulteress, that I was a drug addict, that I was, you know, a drunk, that I was a liar and a mean person. And these things had become literally engraved and tattooed, so to speak, in my spirit man. And even though I was seeking God, I was still, my heart was seeking God, but I was looking in the mirror and seeing the tattoos of this person, if that makes sense. And so it kind of started taking me on this journey and it's so crazy you said that song because that's my song. And the song is, um, Carrie Joby about, I want to lay at your feet. And I was, we used to sing it all the time. And I'm sitting in your lap and laying on your chest and all this stuff. And, and I won't go into the whole story, but he took me down this little path kind of thing over a couple of days or months. Take, I don't even know how long it took at this time. But he had told me, he called me beloved. I have never been beloved to anybody. At first I was like, well, that's an old word, you know, that's just kind of weird in a way, like my beloved. And I always, I know this is going to probably sound blasphemous, but I hate the book Song of Salt. It makes me so uncomfortable. I feel like I'm watching like Christian porn. Like I'm, and it's horrible because what it is, is something broken me that I can't just embrace this book. But that's where most of that word is used. He talks about his beloved and how he is, he loves her and he is just enamored by her. And one of the most, probably the most lacking attributes that I feel like I ever had in my whole entire life was love. I had people, I had stuff and I had whatever, but I didn't have that unconditional, unadulterated love. And that's what I was at the place I could not accept from the Lord. Because I really didn't know what it looked like. And then when what he was projecting at me really was a bit overwhelming. I'm going to be honest with you. I was like, yeah. And like this morning, I told you I got DNA in the padding under the carpet in the altar in there. He, I tangibly felt and saw Jesus kneel. I was laying on the carpet crying. I'm talking about like literally the carpet was wet. All these people were standing at the altar, I'm flat on my face. Squalid. And everybody's having their own moment or whatever. And I could see Jesus knelt down. His knees were knelt down and his hand was on my back. And he kind of had his hand up and he was praying for other people. But he had his hand with me. He was with me the whole time. And he was just being this comfort. And I heard him say, I was just fighting it. I was so, I was so very there. I was so aware. It wasn't like I was knocked out or anything, you know, I was very aware of everything that was going on. And I remember him just leaning down and whispering and he was telling me, I will not lie to you. I will not rape you. I will not beat you. I will not call you names that you're not. And he started telling me these things, very graphic, this, you know, things of my life that I had gone through. And not just as a man, but as someone who was supposed to love me. Things men and women had done to me as, as a child, as an adult. He was telling me, I'm not those people. I'm not your parents. I'm not your, your carnal daddy. I'm not your carnal mother. I'm not that person that hurt you with all these things. And he started just telling me, I love you. And it started breaking something in me. And it started this idea of maybe I'm actually lovable by the most high God of the universe. And it just, it, it was, is this journey. And even today, like when I'm struggling, I can just hear him say, you're my beloved. And I'm like, really? You know, and it's typically my, kind of my darkest moments. And when I hear it, it's just one of those things that is now seared into my heart way deeper than the tattoos of all my failure and all my problem and all my issue. And it, I guess it, in, when I did this part earlier, I, a couple of weeks ago, I was driving to Savannah by myself and I was listening to this chapter and I was like, God, I want to know what you whispered truly are. And the beloved came and I was like, no, what do you, you know, what else is it? And he was like, what else is there? You're my beloved. And I'm like, why would I try to seek something more precious than that you're, you were, you know, my most precious? Because that's what that word means, you know? So I do want to challenge you guys to, if you don't have that, if you haven't had that encounter, which is totally normal, totally fine, seek it. Ask for it. You know, who am I to you? Who do you say I am? Because I know what the world says I am and I know what I say I am and I know what everybody else thinks I am or I think I do. But what do you whisper who I am? What do you see me as? I had another small encounter that had started this even idea that you could have this type of encounter at the ramp. And I had went up for a sash. They were doing this salvation type thing. And they had made a special altar call, because I was already saved, but they had done a special altar call that was like specific to the words that were in my heart, you know, and those kind of things. It's like, you just asked for the very words that I was just saying in my head, so now I've got to go up there because you just about called my name out. And Micah Wood, he was the one that gave me the sash and he said, the Lord just told me to tell you, thank you for being his friend. And I was like, oh, I was just like, I'm a friend of Jesus. You know, you sing those songs, but the reality of the love of a friend and that he saw me, like he sees you as a worshiper. He saw me as a friend. That, that was like a year before the whole beloved thing. He was setting me up to gradually tell me what he thought. Because I'm going to be honest with you, if he had just dropped that in my bucket a couple of years ago, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't, you know, before that, I wouldn't have received it. I wouldn't have been in a place to accept it. So I think this, this book, this place, this season we're in, I do think that, you know, it's here for a reason. So seek it out. What does he whisper that you truly are on this, um, when she was talking about because he is I am, because he is wisdom, I am wise. It is on, it starts on page forty-nine and fifty, and then her prayer is there. And it is so true. This is something that should be on our refrigerator. You know, this is something that should be engraved in our, our mind. Because he is loved, I am loved and I can love. Because he is life, I am alive. Because he is able, I am capable. Because he is my brother, I am God's daughter. You know? And it, and it goes on a few more. If we took these for heart truths, our perspectives would shift. Our worlds would change. The third question obviously right here is, what portion of the I am do you need to embrace? And, and in this chapter, it talks about who he is on page forty, thirty-nine, forty and forty-one. And it goes on to all the I's or scripture references and stuff of who he is. Now, some of these make sense, like, you know, well, he is our Savior, you know, we know this. He's the Savior of all people. He is the righteous judge. But some of them do kind of prick me in the heart and say, do I really know you as that? Do I really accept you and put you in the place of that? Do I take on the fact that you are my witness? You are my vindicator? You, you know, you are, like, I can say wholly, you know, you are these things. You are not partial. There's a lot of times I feel like he, he is partial to the other person. I'm not getting what I'm supposed to be getting and he's partial, but it's, that's a flaw in me, not in him. That's a, that's a perspective change in me. That's me not getting who he is in full context. So I'm going to challenge you to read that. Um, read that chapter for sure. All of these, pretty much this whole session come out of that chapter. Um, and then there were some questions in the back of chapter two, right here on page fifty-one. And I, I'm not going to go through all of them because some of them were actually here, um, in what she talked about. But number five, I like, in the context of an idol, is anything you give your strength to or draw your strength from, what are some areas in your life where you are unwittingly setting up idols? Idols is an ugly word. We're like, I don't have idols. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't do that, but think about it.
I, I'm bad about it. When very easy to bad mood. I'm like, why aren't you happy? I get my happiness from you and then I catch myself. I'm like, Moses, I always like, show me your joy from the Lord. But yet I'm saying, when you're not happy, it brings me down. I need you to be happy.
Yeah.
And I'm setting him to set my day and my joy instead of it just being.
That's right.
And I, I mean, I catch myself. I mean, I catch it when it happens. Before, I wouldn't have because I didn't.
Right.
Before I came here and everything.
That's the Holy Spirit that allows you to catch that.
He was moved to begin with, completely taken out of my life for a little while.
Yeah. Yeah. Our husbands and spouses can, our, our boyfriends or whatever, they can definitely easily become idols, very easily. And our children. I, I've had to knock my children down a peg or two, not their fault, I mean, in my own life. I had to be like, no, they're not going to die if they wait twenty minutes to eat. You know, I've got to seek the Lord because when I'm not eating, then I'm malnourished. If I'm not eating the bread of the Lord and feasting on him, I'm not going to be strong enough, proper enough, good enough, you know, fed enough for them. That was hard for me. I, because I, I usually, one of the things is I kind of put myself on the bottom of the list. I think y'all do that? The very, very bottom rung number. Uh, yeah, we're not even on the list. Yeah, we're not even on the list. We're not, you know, we're nowhere near important enough. And honestly, kudos to everyone here for making yourself important enough to come. Because truthfully, that's what you're doing. You are intentionally saying, I am going to seek out change for my life, for my heart, for, I want to know what God says about me because I can't be better until I figure out what he says about me. It's time to put ourselves back on the list, just not above God. It's time to get ourselves back in the place of respect. I'm going to share something with you that I just thought about. You remember in the first chapter, I think last week she had mentioned, I don't know if she talked about it, but if you've read the first chapter, it talked about Sarah and Abraham and how Sarah was, I think it was the first chapter, um, when he, she laughed when God told her that she was going to be pregnant and she laughed. It was in the first chapter? No, it's what, the third? Okay, maybe you hadn't gotten there yet. Okay. Well, it really, this got me. Because talking about getting on the list, you know, like putting ourselves in front. So I don't see myself still as people see me, right? I'm still, obviously, we're going through this book together for a reason, you know, today at Jeffrey's ordination. So this whole book like slapped me in the face or this whole moment where she talked about Sarah was in the tent. Now, these prophet, the angels actually came to Abraham, spoke to him and said, where's your wife, Sarah? And she goes, I, I guess we're going to go into it more next week, but she goes in and talks about how Sarah, if we were all at our own homes, these men come to their home and these very prominent dignitary type people were there, you would make yourself, no, welcome to our house. How can I help you? How can I serve you? And they had servants, but she hid in the tent. She could listen. She could hear everything they were saying. But she hid in her tent. She unqualified herself for the conversation. It, Abraham didn't say, you can't come out here. She disqualified herself of maybe not as important to be out there in this situation. Today, they asked for pastors and deacons to, that were there in the church to come and pray for Jeffrey. And I didn't go up. And then from all different churches. So it wasn't just like their home church. It was actual, you know, anybody. I mean, there was, gosh, there was like seven or eight churches that were, that were represented. And they were, I was looking at them and I was like, honestly, And they were, I was looking at them and I was like, honestly, they were at a, I hate to say this, it's gonna sound ugly, but position wise, they were at a lower place in their church than I am in our church. I mean, Pastor John actually calls me the youth pastor. He, you know, refers to me as basically our second in command. It's even hard for me to say that, but that's where I'm at. And these guys, some of these were deacons, which was absolutely fine. And they should've gone up and prayed for him, that was a fine. But I disqualified myself. Nobody there disqualified me. But I was the only woman minister there. And I totally disqualified myself because of gender and the opinions of men. And my heart was, I was crying because I love Jeffrey and Brandon. And I wanted to pray and I said, well, I'm gonna sit right here and I'm gonna pray my prayer for them. And God, you're gonna hear my prayer. And I, you know, I pray for them all the time because I love them and, and they're going through this new place that, you know, all this stuff. And I just heard the Lord say, okay, Sarah, you're disqualifying yourself. You're doing it. Nobody else is doing it. And I still could not get up and go up there. And then by the time I was like, okay, I'm gonna do it. Cause what are they gonna say? Cause Pastor Edis is great. He's not like, he's gonna say, go sit down, Rach, he's saying for you. Ain't no, no one, a man in that line that would've said that to me. There might've been a few in the, in the pews that were sitting after I left. But there was nobody that was gonna sit me down, so to speak. And some of these guys in our line, I minister right alongside them. And I just thought, wow, I have so much growth to still go. I have so, you know, we look at this women's march that they did. How many times do we're the ones that shoot ourselves in the foot? We're, we're knocking ourselves down and we wanna maybe blame it on somebody else. I could get angry and for a minute in this, cause it took a little while for all these men to pray, you know, and, and they had their moment and everything. And I was just thinking, you know, I could be angry at the system and I could be mad at the religious idea that women can't preach and all this stuff. But then nobody said that. Pastor Edis didn't say, all the men come and join me. He said pastors and deacons. And which actually I'm, I'm a board member here, which is what we have deacon. We don't have deacons, we have board members. So I actually was filling both of those roles. And I just was like, what an idiot. You know, how ineffective am I? And I, I don't know, it was just such a learning moment today in the midst. And I was just like, you know, I'm thankful for this study because I never would have saw that I disqualified myself. And that's what happened. And so this next chapter, chapter three is where we, we should be, um, going into three. I think the questions next week are mainly over three. Let's see. It was? Yeah, three and then four and five.
Yeah.
So, um, if you wanna get caught up with the book, we should be, by the time we meet next Sunday, let's try to get through chapter three. That way we'll kinda, you'll know what's, but the good thing is, I don't know if you've noticed, but you don't technically have to be right on point because you can follow with what she's saying in the questions. But if you do the questions behind the chapter, they're more involved to the chapter.
And there is, there is some good things in the book that she does.
Absolutely. Yes, there's some very thoughtful.
There's one thing that like totally caught me. Um, and then I heard, even heard the Lord write after I read it. It says, um, you can be a student of other people, but never a worshipper of man. And then I heard the Holy Spirit tell me, can't it though? You can be a student, like she was talking about when you watch sermons, when you,
Yeah.
Um, you can be a student of all these people and still not lie to God.
Absolutely.
You can try and get all your praise from them and not even know who he is.
Yeah. And you can sing the songs.
Yeah.
You know, I kinda hit on that a little bit today. We can go through the motions and study and go to Bible studies and do praise dances and go to worship practice even. We can be on the worship team, but not have a heart to worship God.
It's all secondhand knowledge. Just like, and it,
That's right, that's good.
Because it even started that way in the beginning without you. Because Eve did, Eve wasn't even standing right there. She got the information from Adam, okay, about not eating from the church.
Uh huh, uh huh.
So she got right off the bat, she was working with secondhand knowledge, not what she actually heard from the Lord. So, and it, I, he keeps me on that all of the time that, you know, you need first hand knowledge.
Yeah. Go to the source.
You need revelation.
Yeah.
Because he, I, I forget how it works exactly, but like in the beginning, you know, he, he, she catches the part, um, you don't eat it or I forget how it was, but it was like misinterpreted. And that's how, that's how Satan got a hold of her. Because she didn't receive it straight from God. She received secondhand knowledge from Adam and not from God.
I have to go read through that and look at that. That's pretty interesting. I definitely believe, everybody wants to blame Eve, but it was not, even Pastor John preached about this a couple of times. It is, it is the fall of Adam, not the fall of Eve. It is the Adamaic curse, not the Eve curse. And there's truth in that, you know? And, and that actually puts a good perspective because he had the first hand hundred percent knowledge.
And he was,
He was told and he was the protector and he was the, the strong. And not, you know, not having a gender battle, but just the truth of, of blame if we're gonna end his.
Standing right there, she had it too.
Yeah.
He could've said no.
Yeah, absolutely. You crazy woman, you go to hell. I'm, I'm not eating this thing. I really.
That's not what God said. You get that.
Yeah, yeah.
He should've corrected her because he had her in mind.
And I wonder if some of that comes, I've thought about this a couple of times. When Adam partaked with her, partook with her, was he ma, had he made her an idol as well? Because he was, you know, yoked with her, he was of her, he was listening to her. He had, he had an expanse of time with God before her. So he knew him on such a more intimate level than she did. And he chose her decision. It wasn't to me even maybe the serpent, but the woman that he chose over God. Not that she was conniving and cunning and whatever. She wasn't Delilah. She just offered what had been offered to her basically and he participated.
My joy, he didn't make that.
That's right.
He has no knowledge of how I feel about that.
And he can't change your perspective on that.
And I was trying to show me that. People can't make, you don't get angry because somebody made you, like you got angry because you judged, you angry at everybody else.
That's right. Your response and your action is yours. Yeah, absolutely.
Being that there for a while, um, a couple of years ago, I had just done another idol myself. Because if he didn't go to Wednesday night church, I wouldn't. If he didn't wanna do this, I wouldn't go. You know, I was always taking his approval and what he wanted to do versus what God wanted to do.
Yeah.
And God had to really show me that, say regardless if he goes or not, who are you?
Yeah.
Who are you and I? What do we have?
That's right.
What we have less than what you have because you don't wanna go if you don't go? You know, and.
And, you know, I think when, when they talks about the I am thing, it helps shift that too. Because like she was saying, like, is he your Savior? Is he your healer? Yeah, yeah, he's all those things. But when he's only that, that's only what he can do for you. But he is Tadash. He is holy. He is beyond, he cannot be compared. He is the sovereign Lord of the universe. He is not just what he could do for you. He's not just these things that he has done for you. He is the great I am and everything that that entails. And I think that when we bring that perspective back in, then that's when, when we find out who he is, then we find out who we are. And then we find out our purpose and our plan and, and everything that goes along with it.
I think this Bible study has been a, I mean, thanks for, I don't know if everybody,
Oh, yeah.
Cause I've done, just, I've been here, almost, this year's my eleventh year in this church. I've only done three Bible studies. I just.
Yeah, it's not because we've only had three Bible studies in eleven years. It's not.
I used to get in like people out of there like that to crush. It's cause they wanna get close.
I was the same way.
I didn't wanna get close. I don't let down my Bible facts too. But this is the first Bible study that I'm like, if you ain't have it, I'll have it out.
Yeah, that's great. That's awesome. Did you see the, um, did y'all see my Facebook post with the, um, revelation I got when I was going home Sunday? Because the Lord really smacked me with hating women.
Yes.
And we had that, we were talking about that and God was like, Rachel. And he started showing me people specifics. And I'm like, I don't like her. I don't like who she is. But then I was like, why don't you like who she is? Well, it was either because she had actually done something to hurt me or it was because actually I, what the qualities I didn't like in her are the qualities I don't like in myself. Or that I hate, that I'm trying to change. Or, and this is a pill swallower, I mean, this is like a jagged pill kinda swallowed. Or I don't like the qualities in her that I wish I had. The jealousy concept. And it's so easy for me to be telling my girlfriends, yeah, but our girl, she don't like you because she is jealous of you. And I have no problem telling everyone of y'all that. But then when I say, oh, I don't like her because I am jealous of her, ooh. It's like blasphemy in itself. You know, like, I am not jealous of nobody, you know? I mean, you just, but the truth be known is there. And if we're going to change, we have to be real with ourselves. And I was just like, Lord, I was, I had to pull her on the dirt road and do that video.
And you can't be real with yourself without getting real.
That's right. And when he gets real, he doesn't call it out. He, it stung, but it wasn't like he was hurting me with it. It wasn't like he was beating me with the truth that you're, you're a broken, sinful person. You're looking at these people wrong. You're looking at yourself wrong. It wasn't like I was being condemned. It was saying, hey Rach, you're looking at this wrong. And I love you and I love you enough to tell you this because I want you to change and I'm gonna help you change. But you have to see it before you can change it.
Like for instance, with me, like with the drama team that's a person.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's been amazing because, I mean, it was, the drama team, the night four years ago at Light Night was what drew me to go to church.
Awesome.
I was not even going to church the first year that I was here. And I wanted to join that night. When I saw him, I wanted to join.
Yeah.
I'd been going to church four years and I just joined the drama team.
Two days ago and was on the drama. Saturday, she did a great job too.
It was like, you know, I had to recognize that the reason I didn't ever join is because I thought I wasn't good enough. Because I saw everybody else and it's so much better and they can only do that, I could not possibly do that.
Yeah.
And the Lord had to say, Amanda, hell, you can't.
Yeah.
You know, and if you'll step out, I'm there. And it's like, when you realize what he wants you to do and what you can do, he gives you the courage to do those things.
Yeah.
He, cause it was like, I don't know, sometimes it's like when you step out and do something that's like, you're not even in your body. I don't know how to explain it, but it was like, you know, when she said, come up here, I was like, no. And then I'm like, okay. And then I, I mean, it was just like, if he makes things easy, when he shows you who you are, he enables you to do something that you normally wouldn't do. You just say yes.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
That's funny, I, I did that, I did that.
That's really good. And what, Ecuador? Will you translate him?
Row and she was like, Helen, come translate into English for all English speaking people. And she was speaking in Spanish. I had no idea of her sermon. I had no notes. And she was calling out things and stuff and she helped me through it. And I said, when she said, will you come do it? And I'm like, yes. And I'm getting up and go, oh, there it is. But I was like, oh.
That is obedience is better than sacrifice.
And I was like.
It is. Everyone, it is not true at all. That's the obedience he rewards. Absolutely.
He places them in front of us, let and prop. It's us who disqualify ourselves.
Absolutely.
We are, are, we are what God has taught us.
And you know, I'm, I'm always thinking, this is something in, in me as a person. I'm always thinking, I guess this is just kinda in my DNA. I don't know if others feel this way as well. Sorry. Had a moment. So had a moment. A little Satan over here on the podium, I had to get rid of. So, um, what I thought about today, when I was disqualifying myself from, you know, praying because I'm obviously qualified to pray. I do that a lot. That's like one of my things, you know, that's my thing. I can pray if I can't do nothing else, I can pray. I thought about if I stood up there. At first I thought about the people, the individuals, all these people that I knew and all that stuff that would be like, tell me to be up there. Then I thought about all those little girls in there. Cause there was a bunch of little girls, little daughters. And they're all about that, um, three to nine age. Because we're all, you know, we all have young, small children. There was a bunch of little girls in there. And I thought, they're only seeing men up there. And how can I break that gender mold? The lie, the legalistic lie that women, and even the pastor had a very good sermon about Philip in the message, in the ordination time today. And he talked about Philip's four daughters that were propitists. So he even made reference to women in ministry and women that were effective in the kingdom. So it wasn't like the building in the atmosphere with the condemning, isolating. I mean, honestly, it was, it was like, I've been in some things where I knew I was a woman and I was not to talk. I had been in ministerial meetings that I was a guest. I was not a voice. And it's, you feel it, you're very stifled. It was no, I had to date off. And I thought, wow. You could've had an opportunity to show these girls that they could be girls with swords, that they could be ministry, that they don't just have to have male parts to bring the word of the Lord, you know? You could have been an example for them. And our little Gracie that gave her life to the Lord yesterday, she was there. And I just thought, you know, all these little girls and I'm just cowering in the middle of white. And by then it was over with. So I just thought about it over and over and I was like, man, I suck.